All right, good morning. Welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners Board Work Session for Monday, May 20, 2024. 10:02 AM. My name is Ty Mensah, Chair of the Board. On Zoom, we have Vice Chair Commissioner Wayne Fournier, Commissioner Emily Claus in the boardroom, Commissioner Edwards expected in a few moments, Commissioner Mahia by Zoom, County Manager Leonard Hernandez here in the boardroom. For public virtual attendance, may follow along on Thurston County YouTube channel. We have a two-hour session, starting off with an executive session pursuant to RCW 4230-110-1I, to discuss with legal counsel representing the agency matters relating to agency enforcement actions or to discuss with legal counsel representing the agency litigation or potential litigation to which the agency governing body or member acting in official capacity is or is likely to become a party when public knowledge regarding the discussion is likely to result in adverse legal or financial consequence to the agency. Summit Lake mitigation is the issue. We have approximately 30 minutes. Commissioner's action may follow. Following that executive session, I am going to need to be on another meeting upstairs. And Vice Chair, would you like me to anoint Commissioner Claus to run the meeting from the boardroom? Or would you rather do that from Zoom?
No, please. I don't want it to be Zoom.
Okay. Commissioner Claus, are you willing to take over the meeting?
The honor is mine. Thank you.
So right after the executive session, I have to be upstairs and then I may come back for the tail end. I should be back actually for the tail end. I think I need about 45 minutes for the meeting I have that I could not reschedule. So with that, are we ready to begin executive session? Looking at staff.
Gotcha. No problem.
Giving the announcement out front.
Okay, that concludes our executive session. No commissioners' action follows. Moving on with the agenda, the next item is a presentation from Public Works on our on-call engineering and professional consulting services contracts. And it looks like we have Assistant Director of Public Works Karen Wise here to present this item, so I will go ahead and turn it over to Karen.
Hey, good morning. Thank you, Commissioners. As mentioned, Karen Reeves, Assistant Director of Public Works. I am expecting Jennifer to pop on here at any moment, but we'll go ahead and get started. I would like to introduce two other staff members from Public Works who are with me today, who were involved with the on-call consultant procurement process. And so I have Xavier, here comes Jennifer, Xavier Soto, who is our projects program management office manager, and Dawn Ashton, who is our procurements and contract specialist. Both of them were highly involved with this process. So I see Jennifer's joined us. Before I start screen sharing, I will pass it to Jennifer, and she can provide some context for the presentation.
Thank you, Karen. For the record, Jennifer Walker, Public Works Director. Karen's going to go through a little bit more detail the benefits, what this actually is, why we do on-call contracts. I want to speak just briefly about our capital budget and just give you context in terms of the volume of work. So for 2024, we have a planned capital budget of just over $53 million, and for 2025, just over $33 million. And so the on-call contracts that we use help us deliver on those programs. And so with that, I will turn it back over to Karen.
I'm going to share a screen. And let's see, right here, hopefully that will work. Okay, can somebody give me a yes that they can see that? I see Jennifer's giving me the thumbs up, so we will go with...
You're in presenter's mode, Karen?
There we go.
There we go.
Is that okay now?
Yep, thank you.
Okay, perfect. So again, the why, we're bringing a set of on-call consultant contracts to the board for approval in June, and so we wanted to provide prior to that a background on the on-call consultants and discuss the 2024 solicitation and results. So the agenda for today, we're going to discuss the how and why, the history of our use of on-call consultant contracts, benefits, the selection process, and what the next steps are. So on this slide, the selection process for architectural and engineering services, and we of course use engineering services primarily, is governed by RCW 39.8. And that RCW provides the process or mechanism that government agencies use for architecture and engineering service contracts. And it requires that they negotiate contracts for these services on a basis of demonstrated competence and qualification for the type of services required at fair and reasonable prices. So when a project is then determined to use on-call consultant contracts, the agency will evaluate the statements of qualifications and performance data, and then select a firm deemed to be the most highly qualified to provide these services required for that proposed project. This also aligns with our Thurston County procurement policy 201, which basically exempts architectural and engineering services from bidding and competitive solicitation pursuant to the RCW 39.8. What do these do for us? These really provide a valuable tool in our tool belt to, for project delivery. It helps us manage our diverse and complex extensive portfolio of projects by enabling us to use highly qualified engineering service firms, and allows us to mobilize quickly, brings efficiency in terms of both time and cost, and leverages technical expertise to deliver results to the community. And so some history, we've been using this on-call consultant process or contracts since 2015. We first awarded contracts to six firms for an initial two-year period, which was then extended until 2018, when we awarded contracts to 10 firms. Those were awarded for an initial two-year period, and then we had four one-year renewal options with those contracts, which has taken us through to July 2024, and that's where we find ourselves now in 2024 with our current solicitation for contracts. Terms of benefits, touch on, they provide a specialized technical expertise that we may not otherwise have in-house, also provides additional staffing resources that we can get more work done and time, and allows us to address the peaks and valleys that we may have in terms of workload in staffing, and of course, to address vacancies that may come about. We are able to improve our grant funding outcomes through using these contracts. And not to be overlooked, it also provides insight into industry best practices. We're out there working with best-in-class engineering firms who can provide us information on best practices, innovation, and opportunities where we can improve in our project delivery. I was going to add, to give an idea of how we use these at Public Works for our current set of on-call contracts, which again, been in place since 2018, we have issued over 160 task orders benefiting approximately 60 projects. So how that works is when a project is identified, and we determine that an on-call consultant should be used, we award a work on a task basis where we define a scope of work, and reach out to the on-call consultants who provide us with their approach to that scope of work, and a cost estimate. We then award that task to the consultant deemed to be the most qualified to be able to provide the desired services and outcomes. So in 2024, for our selection process, we issued an RFQ at the board's approval on March 7th of 2024, and we asked for responses in eight service categories, as demonstrated on the slide here, and there were specific expertise requirements for each service category listed. And we received within a one-month period of time approximately 19 responsive proposals. And so these proposals were initially reviewed for responsiveness and basically meeting the minimum qualifications as listed in the RFQ. And then subject matter experts from Public Works that worked in groups of, or teams of three, evaluated each of the proposals. They evaluated them individually based on the criteria shown, one through five, and then they met to review the scoring and complete a ranking worksheet. And then those rankings were presented to the Public Works leadership. Criteria number six, which was interviews, was not needed in this solicitation process. So here you can see the results of that ranking process. There are 11 firms that we are proposing to move forward with. We ensured that there was more than one firm selected for each category, then that provides us a depth on our bench from time to time. The consultants may have staffing issues or may no longer offer a service, so we wanted to make sure that we had some depth within the system. Many firms provided responses and were selected in more than one category. For example, HDR Engineering, they scored highly in five categories, and the result of that is, you can see their proposed ceiling amount is higher than some of the other consultants, and that's based on the anticipated work that we just seen. Ceiling amounts were established based on analysis of the work that we see in the next two- to three-year period.
Karen, she's answering my question right now.
Never mind.
Our proposed is for an initial two-year term, beginning on August 1st of '24, with three one-year renewal options, so a five-year total time period potentially for these contracts. And then at renewal time, we go ahead and evaluate the anticipated needs and request Board of County Commissioner approval or adjustment of those ceiling amounts as needed.
Karen, can I actually do another follow-up to that?
Yes, of course.
So I did have a question on how we came about with the proposed ceiling amount, and you answered that, but I think it was either last year or the year before, you had to come back because of inflationary factors and increase that ceiling amount. Just based on this proposed, is that kind of like a factor that you've measured in?
We did an analysis of really honestly what work we anticipated over a three-year and beyond time period, but we wanted to establish an initial criteria and initial ceiling amounts, and we do plan on reviewing those and adjusting those every time the renewal comes up, just because things change, our projects change, our staffing may have changed during that period of time. So that is a natural part of the process at renewal time, is to really evaluate what our needs are at that point in time, based on work plans.
Thank you.
Karen, is that proposed ceiling amount for the three-year period or annually?
That is, at this point, it is for the contract, so we would be proposing that for the contract, but again, keep in mind, the first initial period is for two years, and after that two-year period of time, we would look at exercising an option to renew that for an additional year, up to a total contract period of five years.
And what's the history been on, what do you find you really need by the time, you know, looking back a few years, what have you been using? Did you use a million five, or did you only use a million three, or did you need more?
It varies by contract. It varies a lot by contract, because again, HDR Engineering, if we're using those across five categories, that may be a very big number, whereas some of the others may be in one category, and it may be a 250 or $500,000 contract.
And the reason I'm asking that is, you said 53 million for '24, 33 million for '25, that was kind of your budget.
So keep in mind, when Jennifer provides our total project amount, we still, that doesn't, these are not construction projects, right? We still need to go out for competitive bidding process for construction projects. In addition, if a project is federally funded, we do not use the on-call consultant roster. We also, moving forward, would be bidding that out competitively. So this is just a subset, or a piece of these really help with pre-design and final, pre-design, design, and final engineering activities on our contracts that aren't federally funded. Does that help? Does that answer the question?
Yeah, but I am kind of curious, what's the big difference between '24 and '25? Why such a difference? Why such a, why such a difference, $20 million?
In terms of the projects?
Well, I don't, I don't know the answer to that. When Jennifer started out, I think it was 53 million for '24, 33 million for '25, unless I misheard that.
No, that's accurate. So one of them, if you think about Green Cove, that's $9.1 million. That's a significant project, that's making that up. So it's just the projects that we have planned.
Another example of that is State Route 507, I think is moving along in the construction process. I mean, our capital program has, again, peaks and valleys in terms of when things are going out for construction versus being in the pre-designed stage. I will also caveat that with Jennifer's $33 million number, did not include, I just took that right out of the budget, it did not include carryover amounts that would be moving forward from '23 to '24. So anytime you look at our full capital program, there are just variances from year to year based on when things are going out to construction, because your construction dollars are the significant, usually the significant dollars of a project.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
Okay. And so then, the next steps are rates and contracts are currently under negotiation. Dawn is working with the proposers to discuss their rates. And then we are planning on bringing an agenda item request to the board for contract approvals on June 18th of 2024. So with that, other questions?
Yes. I just want to get in, so the chair would know I had a question, that's all. If she calls on me, I'll ask it. How do we know, Ben's, you're not having a real bid process here, who's reviewing to make sure we're getting the best deal for the taxpayers of the county on these individual issues here? And you've got, what, 11 different groups that you're working with?
So the first thing I would say is, when these groups are submitting their proposals, right, they know that they're in competition, so to speak, with all of, all of the proposers that are out there. So they are sharpening their pencils and bringing forward their best proposal. Then we go through a process of working with the consultant to make sure that their rates are reasonable. And we still work, keep in mind, you...
So to that process, and this is for my benefit as well, when you need to use one of the on-calls, do you just work with one, or you submit the job to multiples? Because to Commissioner Edwards' question, that is kind of like an internal bid process, you just have pre-approved vendors. Can you explain that a little bit?
Sure, absolutely. So when we identify an on-call consultant's work, we send out, we evaluate who's available, right, who's within that category. And then we do send out a scope of work to one or more of the proposers and ask for that, you know, how would they approach the project, and then what is their cost proposal? And then that is evaluated internally. We do have a, an internal form where we, each time we go through that acquisition process, we fill out that form and identify the why we chose who we did for that project, based on that scope of work and approach to providing those services.
I would add, we also take a look at the, how they're going to approach the work, the hours that they allocate per position that will be working on that scope of work. And there's some back and forth that happens between us and that, that engineering firm in terms of how many hours do they have the principal working on it versus the primary project manager? So that's all evaluated, and there is a negotiation that happens on those, on those costs per task order.
Do the unsuccessful bidders have an opportunity to see what the competition was saying? Do they review, or do they, at least, is it public information, they can look at it and say, "Well, I guess if I would have bid, bid it, you know, $10,000 less, I might have got that," or something? I like to keep competitiveness in, just for the sake of getting the best deal.
They absolutely have the ability to ask for the results of the process and our scoring, just like any evaluation process that we would go through. And I know that Dawn offers to meet with, with the different proposers and go over their proposal with them, and provide some insight maybe as to why they were not selected. So I think the short answer is yes.
Okay.
Are there any further questions?
Hello?
Commissioner Fournier, we can hear you.
You don't have to have all those different options for engineering firms. You can, right, some places will just have one contractor and just go with them every time. But hearing you say that you keep a list, and you do an internal process when it comes to, you know, these bigger contracts, that, to me, says that you are doing a look to ensure that there's a competitive process of keeping the, you know, getting the best for the taxpayers. Thank you for, it seems like it's an extra step, but it's valuable. I appreciate it.
We appreciate a little internal competition as well, right? That gets us in a, in a better place, where we're really able to evaluate each individual project and determine what is the best approach to completing this project and delivering the outcome. We're all in that together, I think.
Commissioner?
Yeah, we just commend the Public Works team for that internal process. To Commissioner Fournier's point, it sounds like you could have one or two, or even three, but to have that much selection, and then to work it through, where there's a team that's evaluating, looking at the amount of hours, sharpening the pencil, keeps the on-calls vigilant, knowing that they're going to be having that level of process. And also, it sounds like it produces a good working relationship as to understanding what the scope of work is and what the project's going to be delivered. So just well done in outlining that. I appreciate the extra information, Karen. Thank you.
Great work. Thanks, Karen. Thanks, Jennifer.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so that concludes that agenda item. And moving on, it looks like we're down to Commissioners' items. Commissioner Fournier, do you have any items?
Well, I attended the WASC LSC meeting last week for a couple days, and I do intend to kind of report on it, but I don't want to do it via Zoom. So I'll, I'll get a, I'll get a printout of the things that were successful. But I do want to say that our request for that, you know, we have an urban bucket, they have a rural bucket, and then they have an all counties bucket, where they were putting two proposals from all the different 39 counties into each of those buckets. And our revenue flexibility and new revenue kind of plank that we created and request via a lobbying priority was one of the top priorities for the LSC. And the other ones, I tried, you know, they were revenue, they weren't getting much traction, but they were revenue kind of focused. So I was, I tried rolling those in, and, you know, have the, the luxury tax on pet items rolled into the revenue thing, and a few other ones. That didn't really fly. I had it for a minute, we spent about two hours debating, rolling those in, and got the vote to get those rolled in, and then they, I think they kind of realized what I was doing, and then they took another vote to remove Thurston County's items from Thurston County's big item. But, but other than that, it was good. There's a lot of, the lobbying priorities, I think, are going to be things that the rest of the commission appreciates. And then, when it, when it was interesting talking about the conservation futures money being used for purchasing water rights, and the WASC's staff, their evaluation was that you can do it already. However, it's, it's not, it's not specifically noted as something you could be, that you could use the conservation futures funds for, but they said you can do it. But looking for, like, language changes would probably raise a lot of concerns, and then it would be specifically prohibited, potentially. So they're saying you can use the conservation future funds money for purchasing water rights currently. Was some of their interpretations. I thought that was interesting as well. But I'll, I'll give a full print, you know, more, more of a briefing when I get back.
Commissioner Mejia?
I just want to give Commissioner Fournier a big shout-out for his work at LSC. I was there Thursday, just as backup, and he was very creative in different ways to try to approach and work with different stakeholders. And that is, especially when we're talking about 42 different priorities that are stretched out for different counties, and trying to push our priorities to the forefront as well, and trying to be creative. Is there a way that we can mix them up to include not just ours, but others as well? Just very appreciative of the work that you did, Commissioner Fournier, and advocating for Thurston County's priorities as well.
Thank you, Commissioner Mejia.
Anything else, Commissioner Fournier? Okay, then we'll move on to Commissioner Edwards.
I'm not going to give any kind of committee reports or anything like that, but I am interested in what we just talked about on the whole bidding or lack of bidding. And I'm going to go back to the tenant improvements business. And there was, I just need an explanation. There was a million-dollar item in there. And that item was for an HVAC system that we paid as a tenant improvement. And to me, it looks like it's ripe for potential abuse if we don't get bids on that type of thing. And I'm just curious, how did that come about? And it doesn't seem to match the tenant improvements of our ability to remove it from a leased building when we leave here. So has anybody got any insight on that?
Commissioner Fournier, I see your hand.
I'm just, I wanted to get some clarification on the, on the question. Are you asking about the process that Public Works used to procure the contractors, or are you, are you talking to us about the tenant improvement?
Well, I, I'm just kind of following up. Public Works kind of explained how their situation worked. I'm trying to find out...
Like, in my experience, like, there's specific, there's certain situations where, like, when you, when you contract with consultants, whether it be a legal firm or an engineering firm, and there might be like one other instance, where you can, it's not sole source, but you can go to that consultant, and, you know, you have ways of proving that they're a responsible party, and you, you don't go out to bid.
Yeah, I'm satisfied with that one. Yeah, there isn't an issue there. That's, they're doing their business. It sounds like the way they should have. The allegation has been made that we shouldn't have done something like purchasing a HVAC system for a million dollars alone, that we shouldn't have done that because it wasn't necessarily a tenant improvement. But on a follow-up to that, that's just a person's opinion, I think. I don't know what the auditor will say about it. But how, when we don't get bids, how do we know we got the best deal and there wasn't any shady activity? I guess that's where I'm coming from.
And Commissioner, you were specifically referring to a million dollars that was spent on an HVAC system for the Atrium project?
Yes.
I don't have that...
Yeah, I wouldn't expect you to have much of an answer, but I thought maybe Robin could fill me in on how, how that all worked. And I don't know that the auditor looked at it or not looked at it. I don't know if it was part of the, the whole study. I didn't see it in the draft audit report. I understand there's going to be a new audit report today that is the final copy.
Yeah, they'll release the report today, and we will, per the Commissioner's request, we'll be coming back, a separate briefing and going over it in detail.
And, well, maybe by throwing this question out now, I could get, I could get an answer when we decide to do that. I'm just trying to figure out how this all fits, and how do we make sure for the taxpayers, we're getting the best, best bang for the buck?
We'll research that, come back to you.
And I just use that as, as an item, off, off one of the lists of tenant improvements. I think it was like five or six million of tenant improvements on that list.
Yep, we'll research that, bring that back to you.
That's my question.
Anything else? No more? Okay, perfect. So Commissioner Mejia?
I'll leave my items for this afternoon, but I guess since we're talking about tenant improvements, I will bring up the audit report. And I just want to highlight that, while the Atrium project, we did get some audit findings, I, the audit report included a lot of great work that's been done by other departments and offices, financial services, our budget team. And that really didn't get quite highlighted, right? And I, I don't want to, out of everything that the state auditor's office looked at, there is a lot of good work being done, right? And by a lot of our staff, and I don't want to take away from that good work being done, because I really think it's important. I know that it's easy to kind of hone in on our disagreements about the projects and the specific findings, but I also want to highlight that there was a lot of good work that was done. There was a lot of, right, things where, I mean, so many other departments got looked at, so many offices got looked at, and, and, you know, those came back all right. And so I just don't want to take away from that, and the work that's being done in the county.
And the time span, Commissioner, was like a two-year time span. So they looked at it quite a bit, and a long time span. There was things that they commended us for, I agree.
Okay. I also will hold my items till the afternoon session. Any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing none. So that concludes today's morning agenda, and we are adjourned.